Welcome, everybody. As you can probably see, I am not Mark Mitchell. But I am very happy to be here. I'm Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Thank you all so much for being here tonight and joining us in the Harry Y. Mitchell Government Center. I would ask all of you that are able, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. All right, again, thank you all for being here tonight. Let's go ahead and get our meeting started with our meeting minutes. Councilmember Keating?
I move to approve items A1 and 2.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Councilmember Keating? Item 3B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes.
Vice Mayor, I move to approve items B1 through 10. 3, 3B1 through 10. 3B1 through 10.
B1 through 10.
Second. 3B1 through 10. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. For all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes, seven to zero. All right. We are going to go ahead and move on to mayor's reports and announcements. Tonight, I'm going to call up the vice mayor's reports and announcements. And I'm very excited to announce the 2018 Bike Hero. I'm going to come on down up front. All right. Many of you may not know that we actually have a 2018 Bike Hero Award recipient. We're very excited to recognize individuals and different organizations that aid in increasing awareness of bicycling and promoting bicycling as a viable mode of transportation in Tempe. This year, the Tempe Transportation Commission selected, drum roll, J.C. Porter. J.C. Porter, come on up. Let me finish reading all this great stuff about J.C., right? All right. So, we are very excited to recognize J.C. tonight for his contribution in promoting bicycle awareness in Tempe and at Arizona State University. He spearheaded efforts to add bike boxes on several campuses, intersections, charros along the campus and city streets, and establish a contraflow bike lane. He opened bike valet stations at ASU's campus, which are really great. I've had the opportunity to see those, where over 30,000 bicycles were parked during the 2016 and 2017 school year. Under J.C.'s stewardship, ASU Bike Program received the university president's award for sustainability in April of 2017. And if that wasn't really enough, and kind of make me feel a little like an underachiever, J.C. actually rides his bike 20 miles to and from work every single day. So, congratulations to J.C. Way better than the flag. Oh, wait, this way, this way. Thank you for what you do. All right. Congratulations to J.C. once again. Very nice. We're going to go ahead and move on to the city manager's reports and announcements. And I know we do have a couple. So, Andrew, with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, Andrew Ching.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. For the first announcement, Ms. Kuiper is asked to speak about the election.
Thank you and good evening, mayor and council. Brigida Kuiper, city clerk. And I'm here to provide my last update regarding the March 13 ballot by mail election, because Election Day is now five days away. As of yesterday, March 7, almost 18,000 ballots have been returned, for about a 21% return rate. If you haven't returned your ballot yet, don't mail it, please, because it's probably too late. We recommend that you drop it off at one of our two ballot centers here in Tempe. And in Tempe, the ballot centers are at the Tempe Public Library and then here at Tempe City Hall. The hours do vary, so please check the website to find out the specific hours. Ballot centers are open throughout the weekend through Election Day. And as a reminder, on Election Day, Tuesday, the 13th, ballot centers will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., just like a polling place. Anyone in line at 7:00 p.m. will be allowed to vote. Unofficial election results will be posted to the city's website and on Tempe 11 shortly after 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. And as this is a ballot by mail election, those will be the only results released on Election Night. It is anticipated that final unofficial results will be released on Wednesday, the day after the election. But that, of course, depends on the number of voters over the weekend on Election Day. Thank you very much, and don't forget to return your ballot.
Thank you, Brigida. Great reminder. Andrew? Andrew Ching? One more on the roundabouts in Tempe?
Yes, thank you. We'll be inviting Julian Drusang to come to the podium and give you a presentation about roundabouts in Tempe.
Thank you very much. So, I'm here to talk to you just briefly about roundabouts in the city of Tempe. These are some council priorities that relate to this. These are actually some strategies that help us achieve these performance measures. So, the first being the reduction of fatal and serious injury crashes to zero, and also decreasing congestion in the city. And later on in the presentation, I'll kind of touch upon how roundabouts help us in meeting those. So, what are roundabouts? Roundabouts are an intersection, not too different than a standard intersection, with the exception that there is a large circle in the middle. It can have four legs, three legs. It can be a single-lane roundabout, or it could be multi-lane roundabout. What a roundabout is not is not a large rotary. This is an example of European rotary in Paris. There's also some of these on the east coast. They're very large in diameter and very different from what we'll be talking about today. On the other end of the spectrum, the neighborhood traffic calming. This is actually one in Mitchell Park. It's much smaller. It's meant for a different purpose. This is primarily meant for traffic, neighborhood traffic calming. How does a roundabout work? A vehicle approaches an intersection, they have to slow down to about 20 miles per hour. The first thing that they'll encounter is a crosswalk, so they'll make sure that they yield to any pedestrians that may be there. The driver then approaches the roundabout, makes sure there aren't any other vehicles coming from the left. If it's clear, they can enter the roundabout, and at that point, make a right turn, continue through the intersection, make a left turn, perform a U-turn, or if you can't remember where you're going, you can go around counterclockwise until you figure it out. At that point, as you're leaving, y'all approach another crosswalk, and you may encounter pedestrian at that point, and then you continue out of the intersection. So, why are we talking about roundabouts? The first is safety. And so, you can see, I've highlighted in red, there's a number of different research projects here that have data, but 60% to 70% reduction in injuries and 80% to 100% reduction in fatalities. So, this goes right into our Vision Zero goal and our performance measure. Also, from a capacity standpoint, some research has shown as much as a 75% reduction in traffic delays. And so, I'll go into more explanation on these two, why that's the case. Why is it safer? The main reason is that traffic has to slow down. In a typical intersection, traffic could be going through the intersection from 30, 40, 45 miles per hour. For a roundabout, vehicles must slow down to speeds of 20 to 25 miles per hour. And you can see on the chart up there, by any time you can reduce speeds, you reduce stopping site distance, you reduce crash risk, and you reduce the likelihood of fatalities. So, 20 to 25 mile per hour range, you're looking at 5% fatality risk, as opposed to 40-plus, which gives you an 85% risk. The other major one, and here's a picture of it on the top right, is a T-bone crash. And so, a roundabout removes that direct left turn, so you have indirect left turn. So, the type of crashes you typically see are minor fender benders and side swipes, as opposed to these T-bone crashes where they're high severity, and the human body just isn't designed to take that side impact. Why is it more efficient? The main reason is you don't have any red lights. At a standard intersection, half the traffic has a green light and half the traffic has a red light, so somebody's always waiting. For a roundabout, vehicles are always moving, and you can have overlapping movements. So, you could have four right turns, all taking place at the same time. You can have a through movement combined with a right turn on another approach. So, the fact that there's no, nobody is forced to wait, and that there's overlapping movements really makes for an efficient movement within the intersection. One of the biggest issues that we run into, kind of as a profession, has to do with public attitude. And so, this is an NCHRP study that was done, and they looked at public's attitude before a roundabout went in and after a roundabout went in. And you can see, before, over 65% of people had a negative, a very negative attitude, with only 14% having a positive attitude. After the roundabouts went in and people were able to experience them and see the benefits of that, the negatives went away, and you actually saw over 70% being positive or very positive. So, I have a small picture here. It was Dr. Seuss's birthday, I believe, last week. And this is a book that I've read with both of my daughters. It's Green Eggs and Ham. And the person, the story, they're trying to get this other guy to eat green eggs and ham. He says, "No, I won't do it on a train. I won't do it on a boat. I'm not doing it." Finally, he tries the green eggs and ham. He says, "Hey, I like this. This is good." So, it's kind of...
Not in a box, not with a fox.
You read it, too.
I read it yesterday. I tried to read it every...
Hey, Julian, really quick, can we back up? I know...
That was all I was going to say. I was just going to really say that I appreciate the Dr. Seuss metaphor, and it was very well timed, six days after his birthday.
Thank you. So, where are the upcoming locations? We have three of them that we're in the design stages for, the first being at College Avenue McKellips up in northern Tempe. This is an existing signalized intersection that no longer meets signalized warrants. We also have met with the neighborhood up there. They have interest in slowing down traffic. It'd also be an entrance treatment to those north neighborhoods, as well as to the west at Emily Holman Park, or Evelyn Holman, my apologies. The second one is at First Ash Rio. We've done presentations to you in the past about this. This is in concert with the streetcar going through there. And then, the third one will be at Priest Drive and Grove Parkway. This is a multi-lane roundabout where signal warrants have been met, but due to the geometrics of the curves of this location, we think a roundabout is an excellent solution. So, we're moving forward there. So, where are we at? Next steps? We're finishing these designs. We think it's important to have public involvement, so as we further in the design, we'll be meeting with affected neighborhoods and neighbors. Because it's relatively new, we are going to have an education component to this, just to make sure. We think most drivers have at some point experienced these, but for those that haven't or haven't done it for some time, we want to make sure that we're educating on how they work and how they function. And I just pulled four pictures off the Internet, and I just wanted to show it to you how these can also be great entrance treatments. These are examples of landscaping and public art that can be incorporated into the modern roundabout. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Dressing, council. Is there any questions?
Just one.
Go ahead. One quick...
Just one question. Obviously, landscaping, you know, very critical, and it's one of my passions, I guess, but then I look at some of the neighborhood landscaping on some of the roundabouts, it's very depressing. So, I just want to make sure that we're going to have, you know, a good thought process on landscaping of that roundabout.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Dressing, thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
I appreciate it. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. If there's anybody that really wanted a copy of the agenda, there's actually copies in the back, and if you're not sure where they might be, Dusty back there will be able to help and assist you. The consent agenda will be considered as one group, and we will be enacting with one motion by the city council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Council members may be removed an item for separate consideration. And if you wish to speak on a public hearing item, you just need to fill out a card in the back and get Dust's attention, and she will make sure she gets it to us. The consent agenda is as follows. We have miscellaneous items, items 5A1 through 5A6, awards of bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B7, and resolutions, items 5C1. And I will let you all know that we do have some cards here for item 5C1, which is not a public hearing item, but I know in the past, we've kind of set a precedence to allow public speaking for that. And, right, so, I think we will go ahead and allow public comment for item 5C1. We'll give everybody three minutes, just as we have in the past. With that, I will ask, though, is there anybody that has any comments for any public hearing items listed on the agenda, which I believe there's only one? All right. Council, is there any particular item that you'd like to pull at the moment? Anyone that you'd like to remove? No? Nope? Well, we're just going to make a motion. So, we're going to go ahead and make a motion of approval of the consent agenda minus resolution item 5C1. Is there a motion? Second? All right. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor, please vote. Oh, dang it.
Aye.
I just voted for you. All right, hold on.
Aye.
I knew he was going to say aye. We're pretty good. We grew up together. Got a lot of history. We're going to go to prom together? All right. All right.
That was Councilmember Navarro.
Oh.
Mayor, you went to prom with Councilmember Navarro?
Oh.
I didn't know that.
Cheers. All right. Okay. With that, the resolution, item 5C1, we do have some comment cards here, and Brigida, we're going to go ahead and set it up.
Would you like to read that for the record?
I would.
Thank you.
Once I get it to that, yes.
Thank you.
After I get off the roundabouts. Brigida, my iPad won't move to that one. No, I'm going to get to it. Please. I'm going to speed read here. All right. Item, resolution 5C1, is adopted resolution committing to the adoption of and support for the carbon neutrality goal by 2050 with 100% renewable energy strategy by 2035 for municipal use in city buildings and facilities. Resolution number R2018.32. Is that okay, city clerk? Do I need to read any more than that? All right. Okay. All right. I have a few cards, and with that, we are going to start with Michelle Helm. Come on forward. Tell us your name and address, and you will have three minutes. And as many of you know, the timer is right up here, green. Yellow is 30 seconds remaining, and then red is time is up. So, thank you very much, Mrs. Helm.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Arredondo Savage. It's so nice to see that your humor has continued onto this board. Have you told them about your bell ringing at some point?
That's right.
My name is Michelle Helm, and I live at 1227 East Balboa Drive, Tempe, Arizona. And I'm here not because I'm not for sustainability. I certainly am for it. And I think your goal of 100% renewable energy by 2035 is a wonderful goal, and I'm all for it. What I'm concerned about tonight is not what you're talking about, but the process that you are going through to achieve it. I am all about letting our committee, our citizens, all of the people in this room and at home know about this. I know you've had a committee. I know that committee has continued to work. But how many citizens are fully aware of the conversations those committees have had with you? I wasn't. And I'd like you to do nothing more than to step back for a minute, give us, as citizens, an opportunity to ask you a few more questions, to learn a little more information. As I read through the limited information I have, I understand the capital improvement project budget. It will be 175K for five years, or $875,000 for five years. That's a lot of money. And it goes on to say, this is only the average financial impact it might have on your citizens. Please, I ask you not to vote tonight, but to reach out and seek some more information and to share some more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Helm. Kendon Young?
Good evening, council. My name is Kendon Young. I currently reside at 2646 South Elm Street. I have lived in Tempe for however old, 27 years old, and I'm excited to be representing the city of Tempe Sustainability Commission tonight in my comments. I would like to support the acceptance of this resolution, especially because it demonstrates the future that Tempe hopes to achieve, especially in achieving our equitable goals, as well as our fiscal stability. In that, comments that may be raised about any fiscal impact that this may have, please note that there is a return on investment that will take care of any type of taxpayer implications. So, in that, I support the process. I support this goal, and I'm very excited to see how the Tempe community at large can be involved in what types of projects Tempe can be advancing in order to achieve this goal, since we are a community together, and we want to have a safe and healthy future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Clark Miller?
On deck will be Mark Wilhelm. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Clark Miller. I live at 517 East Kelly Lane in Tempe. I am here this evening to encourage you to adopt this resolution. It is the right thing to do for the environment, both locally and globally. It has been a good process that we have been through over the last several months to reach this point, and I believe it is a good policy to adopt. It is a policy that avoids lock-in, that continues to leave the council in full control of any decisions to implement the policy going forward. It encourages sustainable businesses to look at Tempe as a place to invest their dollars. And most importantly, this policy will save Tempe taxpayers money. It's very clear from recent reports from organizations like McKinsey and Bloomberg and even British Petroleum in the last few months have all indicated that by the time this resolution comes to fruition in 2035, renewable energy will be by far the cheapest form of energy, making it really the failure to meet this objective that will cost taxpayers money. But I also want to say, as the father of a nine-year-old who lives here in Tempe, that this is the right side of history to be on for our children. Climate change is an extraordinarily risky issue, and we have all seen that in the last year. We need to move quickly to decarbonize our global energy system. And this is the opportunity for Tempe to signal a strong policy leadership in that area and to move us in a direction that we all need to go in terms of building a renewable energy future. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mark Wilhelm? And then, on deck, Emma Hobbs?
Hello. My name is Mark Wilhelm. I live at 7861 West Kerry Lane in Glendale, and I actually work here in Tempe at Quest Energy Group. I've been involved in Tempe for, gosh, dating back to '79. I moved here from Massachusetts to attend an energy program, Energy Efficiency and Solar Energy, a graduate program at Arizona State. I ran the solar thermal yard there back in 1979 and 1980. So, I've been in this industry for quite a while, four decades now, which my five children and six grandchildren can remind me of. I have worked for Arizona Public Service Company in management for 13 years, developed the APS Environmental Showcase Home, worked for the Electric Power Research Institute, managing collaborative research in residential and commercial energy efficiency and products for four years. I've started my own companies and consultancies in energy efficiency, solar energy, and climate change over the past several decades. So, as you see, I'm an old dog, and I've been in this industry for quite a while. I want to commend you for what you're intending to do in moving forward. The concept of focus on climate change is truly one that's driven by leaders. An old professor of mine, a guy named Bucky Fuller, once said that if you want to change something, if you want to change something, build a new model that makes the old model obsolete. And that evokes an element of leadership. It requires leadership. And so, when we evaluate that concept of leadership, well, what is it we're showing leadership with? Well, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has been meeting since 1988, produced five different reports. This austere body, and by the way, I'm speaking to an austere body. I apologize for my pretty lack of physical outfit here, but I didn't even know it was coming here. So, a little aside there. But that body of, gosh, it's around 130 nations that are engaged in the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, thousands of scientists that come to consensus with respect to the science, the impacts, and the efforts that need to be undertaken to fix climate change. Now, have you ever tried to achieve consensus on what you and your office mates want to, where you want to go to lunch? I mean, think about that for a moment. Consensus between scientists. And I've worked with many scientists, and they're often not the easiest people to get along with. So, that tells me, that's a quite significant effort. When it comes to renewable energy, I have helped to place 41 megawatts of photovoltaics for clients. I led the effort with Arizona State University on behalf of Ameresco, together with the Rocky Mountain Institute and the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, to develop a climate neutrality roadmap.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm.
So that they could achieve climate neutrality by 2035. We found a way to do it where it had no negative economic impact. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm. I appreciate that. Emma Hobbs?
Vice Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is Emma Hobbs. I'm a resident of Tempe at 701 South Roosevelt and an ASU graduate student. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in support of the proposed carbon neutrality goals, not only because it will save the city money, but because it so clearly reflects Tempe's values and the values of our residents. As I've listened to opposition leading up to tonight and tonight, it brought up some questions for me. The city has been setting all kinds of goals for many years now. In 2014, you set your first renewable energy goal by unanimous vote with very little fanfare and as a part of your consent agenda. In 2015, you passed solid waste diversion goals the very same way unanimously as part of the consent agenda. You have a water conservation goal, and most recently, you've passed goals for ending homelessness and for eliminating traffic fatalities as a part of the Vision Zero Initiative, efforts which I applaud. At the time that each of these goals were adopted, no member of the public and no member of the council raised any concerns or demanded a detailed budget or plan for how they would be achieved. Everyone understood that the goal is simply a statement on vision and intent, and the details will be worked out through your typical staff work and budget process with public input and, I'm sure, many, many meetings along the way. It raises the question, why is this one so different? All of these previous goals were complex and will require eventual investment on the part of the city. Why is this goal so different? I find it troubling that these flip decisions are occurring only five days from a city election. And it's interesting that many who have been urging opposition, both online leading up to tonight and tonight, are publicly known as supporters of single city council candidates. I believe you are all very good at what you do and that you won't be fooled by blatant political games. And I ask you very sincerely to pass this resolution, just as you have passed every other goal, ensuring our sustained future without fuss, and because it's the right thing to do.
Ms. Hobbs? Paul Hurt? No, no, no. We're not here for that. Thank you, guys. Paul Hurt?
Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Paul Hurt. I live at 2078 East Balboa Drive, like somebody else in the audience. And I'm a professor at Arizona State University and elected member of the Board of Directors of Salt River Project. I'm here to ask you, or to thank you, for adopting this 100% renewable energy goal. I think it's a sign of the leadership that Tempe has been willing to take all along. Some may think it's a stretch goal or a little bit ambitious, but I was just thinking back about how our ideas about what stretch goals are and what's... about how our ideas about what stretch goals are and what's ambitious have changed so rapidly. In about 12 years ago, when we adopted our current renewable portfolio standard at the state level, it was 15% by 2025, and at the time, that was thought to be really pretty ambitious. It was cutting-edge. It was one of the leading renewable portfolio standards out there in the United States. Seven years later, it didn't look so ambitious, and 30% was the goal that ambitious cities and states were shooting for. And four years ago, 50% renewable energy goals started popping up all over the place. New York has one now, California has one now. Two years ago, Hawaii came up, the first state to adopt 100% renewable goal by 2045. Now, we've got a 100% renewable energy international corporation movement. They launched in 2016, and they were hoping to get 100 international corporations to commit to 100% renewable energy, didn't know how long it was going to take. They have blown past 100, they're up over 130 major international corporations. I'm going to read you a couple of them. You would expect Apple, you would expect Facebook, you would expect Google, Microsoft. Would you expect Nestle, Walmart, Morgan Stanley, Johnson &amp; Johnson, JP Morgan Chase, Goldman Sachs? This is just a small list of 130 international corporations that have adopted 100% renewable energy goals. Well, when that started coming out, everybody was saying, that's a stretch goal, that's really going too far. So a bunch of engineers at Stanford decided, well, is it impossible or is it feasible? And they did a study, state-by-state study, and came up with a plan for how every single state in the United States could, if they wanted to, get to 100% renewable energy. So it's feasible, still feels like a stretch goal, but I have a feeling in about three years, you all are going to say, boy, I'm glad we did that three years ago, this is not going to cost us anymore, it's not going to stress the grid, and we're going to be proud of the fact that we were on the leading edge. I'd like to point out, I think I'm better sum up, oh, that's it!
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm.
I turned red.
Good timing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your awareness. Sandy Lau? And will be followed up by Carl Parrish?
Thank you. Sandy Lau and I live at 400 East Stacy Lane. I'm asking you tonight for common sense and financial responsibility when you vote on this renewable proposal. Ms. Cooby's opinion column is titled "Embracing Our Values in a Clean Energy Economy." She forgets three important words: "at what cost?" Asking to vote for clean air and sustainability and gain national recognition as a leader certainly appears on the surface to be an easy vote. But what she alludes to is also a rude awakening. She lobs the city and the leadership for getting the ball rolling in 2014 with your 20% solar goal. She talks about your vision and the action that allowed the city to pursue this, yet she admits that this was not a cost-effective decision, given how technology has evolved. How then can she ask for your confidence in supporting and committing tax dollars to this very ambitious 17-year goal without any supporting evidence? In addition, I've asked that we be provided with some estimated costs and benefits resulting from this proposal. You deserve this information as we do before moving forward. Ms. Cooby, a simple answer to not providing this is to say numbers would be out of date within a year, but at least it would have a starting point and some general idea of what we are committing in terms of taxpayer dollars. This is a very doable analysis. We know current and historical technology costs, we know the size and capacity of city buildings, along with the current energy costs, plugging in the use of renewables and estimated future energy bills, and then comparing these current bills is a simple way to get baseline data. Why wouldn't she do this with the assumption the market is volatile and these numbers may change? I have to conclude, she does not want you to see these numbers because of the fear you may not accept her proposal. This is not transparency in decision-making, nor is it accountability for the use of our tax dollars. And finally, in regards to this, given the fact that Councilmember Cooby receives a salary from the ASU School of Sustainability, and they will be one of the main partners in this endeavor, I am asking her to abstain from any votes related to this proposal, especially in terms of tax dollars. Given this relationship, there's a clear conflict of interest. When tax dollars are involved, we must be diligent in ensuring that undue bias is removed, and I would do the same as an elected official. I'm frustrated with how this has been done, and you should be too. I know each of you and how dedicated you are in making the best decisions possible for us living in Tempe. I appreciate your position and know this is a difficult decision. Even with your goodwill of including a financial responsibility clause, there has been no evidence provided that supports this proposal and provides us with any confidence in embracing this long-term commitment. I support sustainability and renewables, but it has to be cost-effective when you're dealing with tax dollars. I'm asking for some evidence that this council understands what you are taking on with this proposal and understand that first and foremost, you owe us responsible use of our tax dollars. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question for you, Sandy.
Councilwoman.
So I have a question. You mentioned that I had said that our solar deployment was not a cost-effective approach. Can you show me that? I'm looking at my editorial and I can read it, too.
You talk about in your article, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth article, their vision and action enabled city staff to pursue the many rooftop and parking lot solar. As technology and the energy industry continue to evolve, it has become clear that those distributed generation rooftop projects are not the most cost-effective approach for cities in the future.
Yeah, and maybe I'll just read it again. So as technology and energy industry continue to evolve, it's become clear that those distributed generation projects, we've done a bunch of them, we've gotten 10%, we've gotten to a 10% goal, we want to get to 20%, are not the most cost-effective because we've had changes in policy. The SRP instituted a change in policy in February that made it a little less cost-effective. We're still saving money, mind you, but not as cost-effective as before. So that's why I say are not the most cost-effective approach for cities in the near term. So moving in the future, distributed energy is not the most cost-effective right now, and that was the point I made. So kind of that's representing it.
May I respond?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Would the City of Tempe provide this information on the 2014 solar goal? How much tax dollars have been invested and what energy savings have been to date? So we know.
Actually, we do have that, and it was provided to the council, and we could release, I mean...
Yeah, I think we have that availability, and we can certainly...
And it does show, and we could also bring up Brayden K. or Grace Kelly, if she's here to talk about the cost-effectiveness.
May I say one more thing?
Because we're not, one thing to be clear is that our earlier rooftop solar projects, and by the way, I think Grace got even better pricing than ASU, so kudos to Grace Kelly. But we saved a little bit more money before there was the change in policy in February 2015. We're not saving quite as much now, but we are still, we're saving. So it's very much a bottom line. It's triple bottom line, and it people plant profits, and it's protecting the environment and all, but it's also a bottom-line strategy for saving the taxpayers' money.
It has to be cost-effective, and I'd like to just add, 40 years ago, I was a new analyst at APS, and I worked on the very first solar research. And the conclusion then is that solar is great when the sun is shining. It does nothing contribute to lowering the cost at system peak, which is much later in the day, and it's not cost-effective. Forty years later, today, solar panels are not cost-effective for residential. They are becoming more cost-effective, I will give you this, but until we get some battery storage, and I understand that APS has a 50-megawatt battery storage capability, but the cost of that is going to, this, we took 40 years to get to this point today. And so I am just saying that it is going to take a number of years before this becomes truly cost-effective. And if you believe this, then why not provide some type of baseline information for us so we can see that?
Ms. Lau, I will definitely point you in the direction of Grace Kelly or Brandon. I know he's Brayden, he's back in the back, and I know he does have that documentation hopefully available, and I'm sure he'll be able to give that to you. Thank you very much. Carl Parrish?
Hi, I'm Carl Parrish. I live at 101 West Fifth Street, just on the street. I'm here today representing Arizona Sustainability Alliance. I have been part of the process for many, many months, as we've discussed in the different working groups. We've heard from scientists, we've heard from economics. We've been very clear that this is a long-term advantage to the city. It's been very apparent, almost from the get-go, that the benefits of this far outstrip the negatives. And although there are some capital, initial capital investments requirements, if I remember correctly, that pays for itself within eight years, which is not very long, long-term. When you think about all the health benefits, the savings in electricity, in our needs as a city, I think this is pretty much a no-brainer. I'm very thankful that I live in a city that's considering this. This is, we're not breaking virgin ground. Seven other cities have already gone 100%. Thirty other cities at least have declared that they will be at 100% before 2030. We're saying 100% by 2035, which is five years after all of these other cities have done so. So we will be in the front, but we aren't going to be on the cutting edge. We aren't going to be on the bleeding edge. Lots of other cities have done this. I've been, I've been able to be part of the discussions with Santa Monica as they did so, as well as Las Vegas as they did so. I'm very proud to live in a city that would consider doing it as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. Brett Fanchow?
Vice Mayor Donda Savage, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Brett Fanchow. I represent an organization, Environment Arizona. I personally live in Phoenix, but we have many members who are part of our organization who live here in Tempe. And we've been involved with conversations with the city about renewable energy for many years, and were part of the process four years ago to set the 20% clean energy goal, which at the time was the highest goal for renewable energy in the state of Arizona. And today, a swift and steady shift to renewable energy is happening here in Tempe and across virtually all sectors of our economy. Many folks have referenced these numbers, but there are 64 U.S. cities and counties who have already committed to 100% renewable energy, including five cities who have already met this goal. There are 128 major corporations who have made the commitment, and as Dr. Hurt said, they range from Apple to Walmart to Wells Fargo. Earlier today, I shared a letter with you all from 16 small businesses here in Tempe who support the proposed 100% renewable energy goal. And really, this just makes sense. We should be using power that doesn't pollute and that's virtually limitless, like that of the sun and the wind. And increasingly, it makes economic sense as well. We put out a report last summer that showed with data from the U.S. Department of Energy that costs for renewable energy and related technologies have plummeted in the past decade as electricity generation from these sources has skyrocketed. So for example, last year, the U.S. generated 43 times more solar than we did 10 years ago, while the cost of rooftop solar and utility-scale solar fell 54% and 64% respectively from 2008 to 2015. Projections that I've seen from engineering master students and MBA students at ASU, which I believe were shared with the working group on this council, on this issue last fall, showed that the city could potentially save hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, over time by switching to renewable energy sources. You know, furthermore, I think it's clear, we need cities like Tempe to work with the utilities to encourage renewable energy development. The fact of the matter is, if you look at filings at the Corporation Commission or plans by Salt River Project, they are planning a future around natural gas, which may look cheap to some today, but will in fact cost us big on our pocketbooks and on our planet moving forward. And Tempe, you know, can play a big role to work with APS and SRP to get more renewable energy on the electric grid by providing that demand here. So I applaud the leadership on this council to put forward this goal, and I encourage you to adopt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All right, that is all the cards I have for this evening, and I will look to my council colleagues for any discussions. Vice Mayor?
Oh, yes, I'm trying to... Did you want to see if anybody else wanted to speak?
Yes. As I'm kind of a rookie at this, I will ask, those are all the cards that I have. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak to item C, 5C1? Yes, come forward. State your name and an address.
Hi, my name is Kayla Oric. I live at 1305 West University Drive in Tempe. I'm a student at Arizona State University, and I feel like I'm just repeating what has been said over the course of this public speaking, but this is a no-brainer. This is the future of our energy and of our city. We need to provide for a framework for us to improve, and I love the fact that it is a framework, because to be rigid is to constrain future possibilities. And I would like to say that I think it would be a crime if Ms. Cooby decided to step out of this vote. I think that it in no way is a bias, but is an education. I think she has championed this vote and is, I'm not going to say the most educated, because I can't speak for all of your own knowledge on the fact, but she has championed this effort. And it is, she is a part of the School of Sustainability because it is a passion of hers. So that in no way is a bias, that is a continuity of her. So thank you, that is all I had to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Yes, gentleman in the back? Gentlemen in the back? Thank you.
Take your time. Thank you for presenting this and having all these people...
Your name? I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. My name is Jason Zeigwitz at 16025 South 50th Street in Phoenix. But I work here at Tempe and at ASU. And the reason I do is because also it's that continuation that I came here, I was actually working in China, teaching English as a foreign language, and my experience of the air quality there made me want to study sustainability. So when we look at 100% renewable energy and say, wow, this is daunting, you know, I want to look at another daunting goal that America had was, which was, we could say it's actually a metaphor, it's a moonshot goal, because there actually was a moonshot goal, landing on the moon. When President Kennedy said, we're going to go to the moon, he said, we're going to do it, and we don't even have the technology yet. We have the technology now, other cities are doing it. But back then, when he made that mission, he said, other, you know, we don't have the technology yet, but we're going to do it because we have to. We got the Sputnik warning. So what was our Sputnik? For me, it was China, but what was, what about here in Arizona? Was it this past June when there was record-breaking heat that planes couldn't take off? Was it the cost that we have to pay for damages from hurricanes across the country in Puerto Rico? So, you know, we have to look at, if we're going to look at just cost, it's better to prepare than to replace and fix. But then there's other costs as well, air quality, people. And by having this, I like that Dr. Seuss was brought up, because this, Dr. Seuss was a visionary, he had visions of different worlds of people with stars in their bellies, no stars in their bellies, a machine that could change the tune, you couldn't know who was who, except for the who's. And so by having 100% renewable energy goal puts us in a direction, we are looking in that direction, so we're going to find that technology, we're going to find a better way, ideas that we don't even have right now because we're not even looking for them. So right now, there are great ideas that inspire me, and I look forward to the wonderful ideas that could be if we put all of our minds together. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. All right, last call. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this agenda item? All right. See none. All right, I will close that portion and ask my council colleagues, is there any discussion in regards to, yes.
Call.
Okay, that sounds great. Oh, and you know what, I kind of forgot to mention one minor thing, is the mayor is actually on the phone. I'm sorry, mayor, I did not mean to...
That's okay.
Oops. This power kind of went to my head or something, but anyway. I apologize for that.
No comment, no comment.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate your patience. Everybody, yes, Councilmember Cooby?
Bear with me, I have some things to say tonight. So there seems to be some misinformation about ASU's role in the process and of setting goals and whether it constitutes a conflict of interest for me. And by the way, Randy works for the School for the Future of Innovation in Society, so it's interesting that Randy's name didn't come up, I wonder why. So I just want to be clear that this does not constitute a conflict of interest, there's no financial benefit gained by setting a goal, you know, 18 and 32 years ahead. So as part of our research over the past several months, and again, this is talking about the process, which has been said to be rushed, but reality, we spoke to as many stakeholders as we could who had interest in renewable energy, climate change action, and we heard from many people, organizations, a variety of perspectives. Let's see, there was Environment Arizona, there was Sierra Club, there was the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, there was a school from, a class from W.P. Carey, and the engineering school, master students who spent an entire semester looking at this issue and problem and coming up with mini and macro solutions for this possible goal. There was the Randy's, Randy's School for the Future of Innovation Society, there was the Global Institute of Sustainability, almost in a minor way, it was actually Lightworks, which is the center of all light-related research at ASU. And then, almost... And then, almost most importantly, there was Arizona Public Service and SRP, our partners, who really stood up, and a lot of people were surprised that APS and SRP stood up, but they saw too the potential and the seriousness of our proposal and our interest, and they were, we were very respectful of that process. We had a very ordered number of meetings that Braden K. and Grace Kelly managed. We started this process way back in September, nearly seven months ago. And ASU did provide us with information about upcoming technologies in the field and current and proposed market trends. Let's face it, ASU is, is not just a driver of our economy, but is a creator, it's the most innovative university in the world. So for us not to consult with ASU, and by the way, this is all pro bono work, this is all service work that ASU did, for us not to consult with ASU would, which just wouldn't make sense. And we got lots of research from them that was later corroborated by virtually everybody else we talked to. Ted Cruz moment, excuse me. They also gave us insight, but they didn't divulge confidential information about what their goal, they've reached similar goals as, as what we're looking at. They didn't give us the exact pricing, because that's confidential, and we also suspect that we got better deals, because Grace Kelly is such an amazing negotiator. But they did let us know about how they had constructed a basic framework for moving towards 100% renewable energy. And, but they were not, I should make it clear, they were not part of the ongoing working group, or any part of our decision-making process. They have identified no role in whatever choices the city might make in attaining the goal. So they themselves, they have no financial interest in seeing us go forward, they have interest in that they're a locally embedded university, socially embedded, and they look to see change happen in the most important, important issue of our time. So I hope I made that clear. So any investments the city makes in carbon reduction and energy efficiency, renewable energy, are going to be part of a long-term conversation with, with our partners, SRP and APS, not with ASU. And then just another aside, just to kind of leave that argument behind, but ASU employs me and Randy, but they're no more connected to or in conflict with this resolution than any of the council members that you see before you today. So to suggest otherwise, it's just, it really misunderstands what this resolution is about. So let's move on too fast, too sudden. I think I explained that this has been a seven-month process, and there was an email that came in, and we heard the argument tonight, that it moved too quickly, came out of nowhere, was phased in much, much too quickly. Well, the renewable energy goal, I want to remind everyone, is a 17-year goal. And the carbon neutrality goal, which, you know, APS and SRP are very interested in, because electrification is the future and is such an important market, there'll be important market share there. The carbon neutrality goal is 32 years, so we have 32 years to get there, 17 for renewable energy. I can't imagine how much more slowly we can phase these goals in. So nearly two years ago, and I should remind us that we did pass our renewable energy goal of 20%, that was four years ago, and it's been clear that 20% at that time, it's not where we wanted to end, we just adopted a goal that we felt was really realistic. This goal of 100% is a, is the aspirational goal. So two years ago, your mayor, Mark Mitchell, and the city of Tempe joined the Global Covenant of Mayors, and I applaud Mark Mitchell's leadership, not just with joining that covenant, but his leadership throughout this seven-month process. And they committed, and we committed, to developing a comprehensive climate action plan that included addressing carbon emissions, so we're doing a greenhouse gas inventory of our city operations and also of our entire city. And they also, that included a commitment to renewable energy, and we are applauded by the community for that. So we've been looking, I'm going to say we're nowhere near the most aggressive city, and we actually resisted some pressure from residents, from folks that I know at the university, saying that we could really move faster and meet 100% by 2025. And though we know this is technically possible, we felt it made more sense for Tempe to move at this slower and steadier pace, where we can take advantage of the better deals coming along, negotiate the best prices when and as they come along. And, you know, there may be disruptions of the system that are negative or positive, but we want to be ready for those disruptions, so we can respond and be a flexible institution. So let's talk about what it costs. So the past few days, we received about 10 emails, 10 emails generally in opposition, that said, "This didn't come with a budget, a budget." Where is the budget? How much is it going to cost to achieve these goals that are 32 years out? I find it a little odd, and I'm glad we heard this argument from someone in the audience, that we've set a lot of goals in Tempe, and it's not something that has been asked to be part of the resolution process. We know we had a 40% goal for 40% diversion. I don't think, I saw you, council member Granville, say, "Where's our, our year-by-year budget for this?" So, and the same thing with, you know, we mentioned homelessness, trying to reduce homelessness to functional zero, we didn't come up with a budget then and there that we had to commit to. It's part of a serious, ongoing project, whether it's part of our budget or part of our capital improvement plan. So typically, though, everyone seems to understand that when we do pass a resolution, we are setting a goal, we are identifying a vision, we are identifying a direction, not a budget and a blueprint, but a vision and a direction. This resolution opens the door to our energy staff to begin looking and negotiating for the most cost-effective projects to bring to council for their consideration. As always, it's going to be a very public process, with the council voting at every, every step of the way, just as we always do, as part of the regular budget considerations. We also had in many public meetings here, but we also had a public forum that was well-attended, and we had an online forum as well, because we do it right in Tempe. We didn't do it for pigeons, for pigeon poop, but we didn't, we didn't have a public forum, but we had a public forum for this. So I just want to remind that. Now I just want to conclude with why this is so important. And I'm so glad to see some young people here today, because honestly, this is why we're doing it. I'm part of the generation, and Paul, you can sympathize, we can hoist a drink about this one, we're part of the generation that helped really put us in this mess. So I want to move beyond the questions that have been raised in these emails the past few days and on social media, and, and just elaborate on why I created this group to begin with. We know that climate change, and thank you, Dr. Miller, who left, it's a defining challenge of our time. We know that 70% of carbon emissions are coming from cities and towns. So cities and towns need to be at least 70% in solution, especially when we have a federal government that's withdrawing from that commitment, cities really need to step up. The environmental benefits, as we leave coal-based systems behind, there's, there's social benefits, there's health benefits, as we have a healthier, cleaner air and healthier children. And the economic benefits are untold, as we, as major businesses that are moving into this area are looking for cities that adopt incredibly progressive anti-discrimination ordinance, and they're looking for cities that are ahead of the curve on renewable energy and on clean energy economy. More importantly, another Ted Cruz moment, sorry. More importantly, this resolution, it really does speak to Tempe values, it reflects the values of our residents, it saves money in the near term and the long term, and it is on the right side of history, we've heard that said tonight, too. We may be a little bit late to the party, we know other cities that come before us, but we need to start participating in the change that we see in the world, we need to be part of that change. And we know that if we have ASU as a partner and giving us advice, that'd be wonderful, but I, I thank so much APS and UPS for coming to the table, and we had such a great, respectful, considered process. I thank them so much for their partnership, because you will be our partners moving forward as we make history. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else that has?
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Yep, go ahead, mayor.
Thank you. Well, first off, I want to, I'm sorry I can't be there, but I want to thank all the residents that came tonight and spoke and sent us emails. It's very important, and we value the input that we receive from our residents and from the community at large. I also want to really thank, and I know a lot of groups mentioned, that Councilmember Cooby mentioned, but I want to thank all the stakeholders that are involved in this process. We had a number of meetings with a large variety of stakeholders. I just really want to highlight Arizona Public Service, as well as SRP. You know, working side by side with our local utilities has really been educational, and we appreciate the role that they helped play in making us get to this carbon neutrality goal. You know, I just want to remind everyone, this is a resolution, it's an aspirational goal. And I really want to assure all the residents that anything that we're going to do to move forward this goal will be done in the normal budgetary process, which is, and it really always has been transparent and open with public involvement. To, I, I just want to reemphasize that, this is an aspirational goal, it's a resolution, but this is helping set the framework, but we are really setting the goal and aspirations today, knowing that we're going to come back, have the public involved through our budget process. And, you know, a lot has been said tonight, and I'm not going to reiterate some of the things that have been said, but there's one thing I do know, is that we can't really plan out exactly what type of technologies will be available over the next 17 to 32, 32 years or so to reach this goal. But most of the great advances, to my knowledge, haven't even been invented yet. And, and I can honestly think that there's going to be some great opportunities in the future with better technologies as we move forward. So we are taking baby steps, we have to take baby steps, and we're, we're starting with energy efficiencies, and we're looking at things like electric vehicles. That way, we're in line with our current technology that we have today, knowing that we're going to be planning for future opportunities for tomorrow. And having grown up in this great city, it's always about looking towards a future generation, and the decisions we make today are really going to help benefit future generations and generations to come. So I want to thank, again, all the residents that came and spoke tonight, and all the emails we received, this is just an aspirational goal, it's a resolution, helping us set the framework, and we will be working with all of our stakeholders and our residents as we move forward through our budget process, as opportunities come up to be more efficient, and this is exactly what this is. I want to thank our staff and, and the council colleagues for helping us get to where we are today, so thank you.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate it. Councilmember Granville?
I'll jump in. So first off, I think it's fair to say that everyone in the room and on the phone, I think we're all on the same side, which is exciting and a different place from where we were even when we had this discussion three or four years ago, however long it was now, in that I don't think anyone that's come and spoke, which is really exciting, nobody said, "Climate change isn't real, climate change isn't man-made, that human activity doesn't affect CO2," and like, that, that in and of itself, I think, is a big step. What we are mostly arguing over now, to the extent we're even arguing, is what's the best way to get there, what's the, 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 the most economically feasible and responsible way to get there? For good or bad, I somehow have taken up, been given, or taken up the mantle of the person asking, "How much will this cost?" And I, and I said that when we were at the COW, I said it to Paul Hurt when we met before, he was very gracious to meet with me. I said it to the people that Councilwoman Kristen Gwynn sent me up with, she was very gracious to set up those meetings, and ASU people were very gracious, I said it to our staff that was putting this together, and I, and I just, I never got it. And I think the point is well-made, that we necessarily didn't get that information for other stuff. I, candidly, I think we did. When we did the, the diversion rates, you and I were on that committee together, and I remember sitting in a meeting with Don, and Don saying, "Not going to cost us a thing. I can do this without a dollar in the budget." And, and so I, I think there were those discussions. I think that maybe the reason for me this is maybe a little bit different is because of my lack of knowledge and the, the scope of the question. I don't know, I genuinely don't know if this is a 50,000 or a $5 million problem we're talking about. And so I, it, it just, to me, the thing I've asked for is just, I just want to be able to vote yes in a responsible way. The thing that I think, I think is frustrating is sometimes when people say they want more information on council, what they really mean is, "I want to stall," right? "I just want to stall another week, or another two weeks, or another four weeks, in the hopes this will all go away." I actually don't want to stall, I just want to vote yes in a responsible way, because I want to vote yes. And so I'll just go over, I guess we can bring it up. So the thing, and you can call me on my bluff if you think I'm doing this, do I need to do something? You need to do something. Okay. Technical difficulties? So this is what we have right now, that we're, everyone's been calling our aspirational goal. And it says that it commits us to adopt and support carbon neutral by 2050 and 2035. Now, anyone who does any sort of statutory interpretation knows that all of the discussion is interesting, but the thing you vote on is what is real. This is what we're voting on, right? To adopt and support this. Now, if you wanted to sort of call my bluff, and, and, which is fine, I would happily do this, just change it to, "We aspire to net new carbon emissions, and we aspire to using 100% renewable energy." That is what an aspirational goal resolution reads like. That is not what we're passing. Right? But I would vote yes for this today. What I asked at our last meeting, and what I asked the people that came to visit me, and what I've asked everyone, is just for an Excel sheet, so I knew the scope of what I was voting on. And I was told that it was impossible because of the changing of the technology. And I said, "Well, give it to me plus or minus 20%. It's impossible. Plus or minus 50%. It's impossible." All right, so I made the Excel sheet. So all you need to do is, first off, you have to presume city growth in services, because of presumed city growth. So you just have to figure out that, okay, the city of Tempe is going to continue to expand, our buildings and services are going to continue to expand, that would mean our energy use would continue to expand, except we have a really great energy conservation program in Tempe, and so we'll have that continued conservation program. So where that red line would show our normal growth of energy, of city use, that orange line's really going to show what our conservation efforts are going to do as LED lights come on, as LEED-certified buildings come on, it's not going to be a linear growth moving forward, and I think everyone knows that. So let's take that orange line. Well, that's easy enough, now we just take the yearly use, that orange line, times the energy cost per unit, 10 cents a kilowatt hour, 8 cents a kilowatt hour, and we get our total energy cost. So you could say 100 units at 10 cents a kilowatt hour, $10. Now, I'm just making these numbers up, just to demonstrate the formula I was hoping to get. So we could look at traditional energy and say, "Okay, it's cheaper today than renewable, but it'll increase by 3% a year because of inflation and because coal is a non-renewable thing, and you have to keep digging farther and deeper to find it each day." So over time, fossil fuels will rise at a rate of about 3% a year. Renewable energy, I think we all agree, has historically gone down in price and will continue to historically go down in price. So maybe it's a little more expensive today, I think that's, some people say yes and no, I think the majority actually might even say no, but it's going to continue to go down at maybe 1% or 2% a year until 2035. I could be off by a ton, maybe it goes down by 5% a year, maybe it goes down by 8%, I have no idea. Problem is, I have no idea. So then we plug those into a giant Excel sheet that just figures that stuff out, right? I didn't type all these in, it's a formula I draw, just so you're. And you, and you can do a renewable version, which is the green part with conservation, or you can do a non-renewable version with rising costs of fuel, which is the gray part, and you get two charts. And this is my made-up chart that I made, right? Where the orange line is the total cost per year of that higher cost in renewable now that will continue to decrease, and the red line is the lower cost of fossil fuels today that will continue to increase because it's a, a source of fuel you have to continue to dig and because of inflation and costs and labor and all that. And you end up with a chart. And that's, this chart is all I was looking for, just something that will tell me, "How much does it cost? How much is it not going to cost?" Now, it's very possible you could do a range on this chart, right? You could say for the renewable one, the orange one, you could make two lines that spread wider and wider and wider apart, because you're more and more unsure of technological and policy changes over time. I'd be fine with that chart. But here's the thing, I don't have any of this. I made all of this up. And all I ever wanted was this stapled to the thing I'm going to vote on, so when someone comes to me and says, "How much money are you spending?", I can say, "Look, I'm not an expert, but the experts told me this was the range." That's it, that's all I've ever wanted. And as soon as I get that, I would really like to vote yes for this. And just spoiler alert, it doesn't have to be cheaper for me, right? Because there are so many other things about renewable energies, about extreme climate change, about asthma, about health, about a million things that make it not have to be cheaper as a renewable energy to have a greater societal good. But I don't even have a sense of the order of magnitude of what I'm voting on. And that's the reason why I'm voting no, which is a shame, because I want to vote yes.
Do that point, just do that point, his, one of his points. Well, just that, if you go back to that slide, so you're actually saying that you made up the data, because you just, you, yeah, so, I mean, we actually have data, we worked on this, the students project that we showed, that, well, it was sent to you.
So I think we kind of all understand this, this whole process, and what we want to try to achieve, and, and I, there's various everything, I'm agreeing with everybody here that's saying, you know, what we're trying to achieve with renewable energy. The mayor brought up a point saying that, you know, this is a goal, this is where we want to be at. I like the word aspire, that gives me comfort in addition to maybe making a change. Once again, we have to go through a budget process every year. Once again, I don't think we're going to sacrifice things that we have to have with public safety, public works, things like that, to make sure what our tax public safety, public works, things like that, to make sure what our taxpayers want, the basic needs, are not going to be compromised. In addition, I think that, you know, obviously, you know, having a goal is great, and we need to understand where we want to be, but I have to agree with Councilmember Granville. Just a little more information would be great. I think for the public, I think a little more information would be great. I'm going to propose something because I do want to see the form of this passed is, and I know you brought it up, postponing it, but there's an opportunity, and I don't think it's going to kill this, to be honest with you, if it goes another week or two or whatever like that, to have some sort of educational opportunity on this. Because there are some now questions that have spurred up. I mean, you had to, I have to call it, I have to check the Colby facts on stuff, but I know you made up the chart.
Colby made it.
I know. But it'd be great to have something to go by. And it's not nothing, it's not, not I'm against this. I think it's just being a little bit more responsible, just to provide some more information. I would propose to possibly delay this, to have that public input, public information, education, so to speak, if there is some people out there that just want some more information, and then bring this back for a vote. And I don't, in my mind, I don't think that it's going to delay the 2035 timeline.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to speak a little bit about the cost of this proposal and, you know, correct some information that I've heard. One of the things I learned in our working group is how the field of renewable energy is changing almost daily. And as we heard before from, I believe it was Professor Miller, who said that we might wind up investing in technology that might not even exist today. So, it's simply not possible to give any sort of accurate estimate as cost is pertaining as that technology changes over time. What we do know is that consumers are looking for more choices in renewable energy and less cost, and we see the market starting to shift towards that direction. This has been a trend for years, and all indications are that it shows no sign of slowing down tariffs or no. Which, you know, so, you know, so much so that our stakeholders actually told us that a 2035 strategy is very safe, and that it's likely that renewable energy will be cheaper than virtually any sort of energy available at that time. I want to make sure that everyone understands that this goal was chosen with the information in mind, but no one is trapped. If the bottom was to suddenly fall out of the energy market, or, you know, the city had some sort of crisis that required a massive amount of funds for investment, the council always has the ability to reevaluate and make changes to this goal as the city adopts it. Every year, as part of the budget process, excuse me, we evaluate progress toward each of the hundreds of goals and performance measures that we've adopted as a council, and we determine how to, we determine how much to dedicate to each of them. The public has the opportunity to weigh in on these decisions, and the resolution will be treated no differently. So, it's not like we're setting a goal that is going to be set in stone and that we're going to throw unlimited amounts of money towards it. It's that we're setting an aspirational goal to where we want to get to, and as part of the budget process, we will then deal with those, we'll deal with that as part of the budget process, excuse me. One of the things I really wanted to say, too, was how proud I am of this working group and how they did such a great job involving the stakeholders, SRP and APS in this process. APS and SRP were both fantastic partners in this process. I certainly, you know, Councilwoman Kubi mentioned, maybe that she was a little bit surprised at how great they were. I was surprised, too. Not only were they 100% supportive of this goal, they offered various ways that we could improve it and make sure that it's a stronger goal, more aligned with our values. So, I'm very pleased to be supporting this tonight.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Shapiro?
Yeah, my turn.
Go ahead.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Shapiro.
All right, thank you. Thank you. First, Vice Mayor, I want to say a few things just about the discussion tonight. First, you know, I have the honor and privilege of serving with two of the folks who came to speak with us tonight about this issue, Michelle Helm and Sandy Lau. There were a few different aspersions cast on folks tonight that I think were unfair and inappropriate. Sometimes I think when people disagree on issues, they do things like that. And so, you know, the idea that these two public servants or some of the other folks in the room have ulterior motives, that's concerning to me because I know these two people, and I know that they are dedicated public servants, that they've done so much to help our kids in our city to succeed, and to say that, you know, they are there speaking because they support one candidate or another. I just know these people well enough that I can't imagine that to be true. And I also think the idea that Lauren or Randy, if they didn't have the jobs that they have, would vote differently on this issue, or that their jobs that they have somehow impact their decision on this issue, I think is also an unfair characterization of their motives. So, I just want to say, you know, this is an issue I recognize, has some controversy around it, but I think the people who are in the room are there for the right reasons. And so, I just wanted to make that point. I also want to say, I really agree with the mayor's characterization. And I want to call into question some of the points that Councilmember Granville made. First, to make your own chart with your own data and to imply that that is somehow influencing your vote or the way other people should vote, I think is just not appropriate, frankly. Secondly, Colby's analysis of the wording of the resolution, that it doesn't say that it's aspirational. As an attorney, you should know and recognize that the fact that there are no repercussions in the resolution for the city not meeting those goals clearly demonstrates that there is no, there is no line in the sand, that if we don't cross this line, some big negative thing happens. That is, putting those numbers into that resolution without any repercussion says, "This is something we'd really like to do." But if we don't hit these numbers, it's not like the ceiling comes collapsing in, or the sky falls down. I mean, there's just, so, I just want to be clear that whether it says the word aspire in there or not, because there are no repercussions for not meeting those goals, these are aspirational goals. And to reiterate what the mayor said on the budget piece, because I did express in COW that that was something I wanted to know more about, were the costs. But I think that the mayor really summed it up beautifully in that any penny that the city is going to spend in order to reach these goals would come back and go through our regular, fully scrutinized budget process. And I think that's a really important factor that we have to keep in mind. That's all I've got, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Shapiro. And just, it's just really quick. I've got a couple of things I'd like to say, and I know there may be some other comments and stuff. And first and foremost, I just want to say thank you so much to Grace Kelly, because it was Grace Kelly many, many years ago that put us on the map for some of the things that we are doing and the initiatives that we have started. So, I want to say thank you to you, and then to Brayden Kay, who's done a lot of really remarkable work, too. And I think together, you guys have been a really dynamic team and put us on the map in a lot of ways. So, thanks to both of you and to the working group, I think, that has worked really hard. I don't think anybody in this room wants something different. I think we all believe that renewable energy is the way to go. It's the future, and it's really important, and we want to find a way to be able to get there. And with that said, I certainly did support our original renewable energy goal, which I know we struggled at the time, where I think we started at 10 and 15, and then we ended up at 20. And that was like a reasonable goal. And the diversion goal, everybody talked about that, too. And that was a little bit different. It was kind of a stair-step type of a thing. And it feels like with, as we move for renewable energy, it's not, it's not about, for me, it's a lot of different things in the sense of me being true to myself and what's important to me. And data is one of those things that I always look and value and how important that is. And I know this is a struggle because a lot of it isn't something that we can technically see right now, but we know that's something that's going to come in the future. So, it's a lot of uncertainty, uncertainties, I would definitely say. And always, for me, you know, fiscal responsibility, making sure that we spend the money the way that our residents want their monies to be spent, is one of the things that is most important to me also. So, for me, this has been, it's like the more questions I ask, kind of maybe it has to do with, you know, my knowledge in the field, but it does seem to get a little bit more confusing sometimes and then brings up more questions. I know we've talked about a lot of the other cities that have already attained that 100% renewables goal, and I applaud them. I think that's a great thing. But a lot of them had deals with the energy companies within their city. And so, it's a little bit different, and you're not really comparing apples and oranges. And I'm not saying I don't want to get to 100% renewables, and I think we can, and I think we will get there. I have no doubt about that. But at the same time, I think as we talk about 100% renewables goal, to me, and we approve this, it becomes a high priority for the city of Tempe. Now, even if we do have to go through the public process every year, I have the confidence that this council and the staff that's here now will certainly make sure that any initiatives that is thought of and brought to the table or recommended would have to go through a rigorous process. But I can't say that in 10 years. I can't say that in 15 years. I don't know how this will be interpreted in the rate of how it is prioritized amongst all the other priorities within the city. So, you know, for me, it's been a little bit of a struggle. And what I will definitely say, and I will continue to support renewable energy, I 100%, no pun intended, support renewable energy. I think it's really, really important, and I think we're working our way to that. And I know we are going to continue to do that. I always believe in cost efficiencies. I think it's so important that whatever we're doing, that there has to be a solid return on investment for the city of Tempe and a reason to be able to do it. Not just because we said we were going to do it, but because it makes sense. And one of the most important things, and I think Councilmember Kubi mentioned it, too, and it is really important, I 100% agree, how important it is to continue to work with our utilities and our energy companies. I thank so much APS and SRP for them being able to sit down at the table. It is so essential that we continue to partner with them, we work with them, and we find great solutions moving forward. And I appreciate not only them sitting down to work through it, but being open-minded and flexible, and I have no doubt that those partnerships will continue to strengthen and grow as we work to attain the 100% renewables, renewables goal. So, you know, for me, like I said, it is just a really struggle. So, you know, I liked Councilmember Navarro's idea in the sense of, I think if there's an opportunity for educate people, to educate our community, so they can learn a little bit more, they can ask more questions if they so need to. And I'm not saying it's going to change anybody's mind. It may not. But I think it never hurts. I think information is valuable, and it's really important to be able to do that. But if we vote on the renewable energy goal tonight, I will be voting no. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Kubi.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Arda Savage. So, just two sort of powerifying statements. One is that staff has told us repeatedly that we can get there with our current level of investment, so to pretend there's been no estimate of cost is just simply inaccurate. And just want to make that point clear. And I forgot my other point, so I do want to, I have an amendment to make, and I hope that it answers some of the concerns that we've heard tonight from Sandy and from Michelle, and because I do respect their opinion. So, I would like to put into the resolution following two amendments that I hope will help to resolve some of this, some of the concern. So, after, whereas the city of Tempe is aware of economic, environmental, and societal benefits of taking a lead, and Brigitta, you have a copy of this, I wanted to add, I want to propose an amendment which includes two additions. And it's, whereas the city of Tempe commits to an open and transparent process in selecting capital improvement projects and energy purchases, including an annual report to the city council, available to the public on potential investments, including their financial impacts and returns on investments. And, and then it will go to the sentence already there. And then now I want to add, and then this is the important section where Councilmember Granville said, this is where the mustard hits the hot dog, I don't know. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Tempe, Arizona follows that the city council of the city of Tempe, Arizona hereby commits to adopt and support, and this is the addition, through partnerships with energy providers and responsible financial investments approved during the city's annual public budget process. And then, a carbon neutrality goal that achieves zero carbon emissions in city operations by 2050, and a strategy of using 100% renewable energy sources for the electricity used in the city of Tempe operations by 2035. So, I would first like to have a vote, or a second maybe on the amendment.
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mayor, go ahead.
If Lauren made the motion, I'll second the motion. If she didn't make the motion, I'll make the motion with her amendments, or second the motion with her amendments. To approve the resolution with the amendment added.
Brigitta, did you happen to get that, the first, the second?
My understanding, the motion was for Councilmember Kubi, and it was seconded by Councilmember Keating. And yes, I did get the amendment.
Okay, very good. Yes. Question for Councilmember Navarro?
So, thanks, Vice Mayor. I'm just going to still throw out the opportunity, and in my opinion, I'm just hoping to sway some votes on this council, because I do want to see this go through with a better number. But I think the educational part of educating our residents, maybe even just looking at the resolution and understanding a little bit more, to postpone this until the next council meeting, I just don't think it's going to kill this thing. I just want to have that opportunity, have our residents just to look at this, absorb it, be educated about it, and take our, one of our opportunities with staff to coordinate a movie, a meeting with our residents to do that. I just think that's going to be a safe bet, and I don't think it's going to cause any heartache.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I guess, well, I will just say this, too, because that was kind of, I'm sure, I don't have this, I don't have a copy of it, so I haven't read it or seen it. So, with that, I'm not opposed to making the amendment and the change, but to me, that clearly says, I think we need a little bit more time to let people digest it and, you know, kind of understand, ask some questions or whatever it may be. So, I'm a little.
I made, I remember my second point. The point was about the education. We are beginning and embarking on an 18-month journey, a climate action plan that will be fully invested, engaged with the public. It's all about, you know, now that we've done our emissions inventories, we passed the goal, we meet with the public, and we go over, we've had, you know, dozens of ideas suggested by, you know, students, for example, but we're going to go out to the community, and it is a part, the next 18 months is a public education plan. But I would, I would like to raise a motion on the floor.
There is a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, and just for clarification, the motion and the amendment is to approve the resolution with the amendments as read into the record.
Go ahead, Councilmember Granville.
I just have a legal question for you, Judy. I don't know what is the resolution. Is the resolution everything in that document, or is the resolution the last part that says be it resolved? Like, is the whereas part perfunctory? And, or is, or is the whereas part? Does that make sense?
In addition.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Thank you, council members. The recitals portion is explanatory and provides background for the action that the council would take, which comes after the now-there-for language.
After the now-there is the action piece.
The actual resolution.
I understand. All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor? Yeah, we're still not done. We haven't approved the resolution. This is only to just make an amendment to the resolution? No. No. This was to make an amendment to the resolution. Is that, can you go back?
Okay, then I guess I need clarification. My understanding.
My thought was that they was going to make an amendment to the resolution, and there was a first and a second for the amendment to the resolution.
If the motion, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. If the motion is to propose amendments to the resolution, only a vote can be taken on the amendments. If the motion was made to approve the resolution as drafted to include the amendments, then the council would be voting on the resolution tonight as amended.
As amended, understood. All right, so, I would ask the city clerk to clarify specifically what that motion was.
Okay. My understanding of the motion, it was to approve the resolution with the amendments as read into the record by Councilmember Kubi.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think we have a motion and a second on the floor. I would say all those in favor, oh, actually, go ahead and vote.
I vote aye.
Aye.
And Mayor Mitchell?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes four to three. Yes, Councilmember Navarro.
Just for clarity, nothing I do support is 100%, and it just kind of annoys me because I just wanted just this not rushed opportunity and to absorb this with constituents that might have concerns. with constituents that might have concerns. My vote is always going to be yes for renewable. This is disappointing.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I guess, you know, my, my two cents, I, I feel exactly the same way. And I think when we make a large amendment to something within a document, I think it behooves us to give ourselves ample opportunity to be able to absorb it and understand it, and especially our residents with that too. So, all right, we will move forward though.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
So, why don't, I mean, because this is a goal, it's an aspirational goal, why don't we, we can have, and we have, we're going to start this climate action plan, a big educational movement anyway, I suggest that we, we plan that sooner or later and have just one, you know, start off with a meeting about, about this issue. We could have the students come and present all their findings, the master students, we could start that way.
Councilmember Granville?
I think, I think that's a good suggestion. I guess I, I still don't, I, I still like to know how much money I just maybe committed us to. So as part of that, could we just have, could we, I do read the packet, trust me, I read every word I get. So if I could just get as part of that, a version of the Excel sheet that I just showed with the correct date in it?
Well, wait, Vice Mayor?
Yes. Mayor?
I, I just, okay, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. Before we move forward, any type of initiative regarding efficiencies with carbon net neutrality, it's all going to have to come back in front of the council through the budget process so that our citizens will be engaged, all the stakeholders will be engaged. So, we're not done with this issue. This is just a resolution with a, with a goal regarding carbon net neutrality, and we're setting up the process for our residents and for all the stakeholders, as well as our city staff and our city council, as we go through the budget process. So, and as Councilmember Keating mentioned earlier in his comments, as time moves on and as we go through the process, and as, let's say, something happens with the economy that drastically changes the, the environment that we're in today, no pun intended, obviously as a council, we're going to have to readdress some of these goals, and it may not be feasible for us to do some of these, these goals as it relates to the resolution that we just passed. So again, this is a process, and many processes, looking towards the future and future generations with the input from our residents through our normal budget process as we always have.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right, we're going to go ahead and move forward. We're going to go ahead and move on to the non-consent agenda. For those of you who may not know, all items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. And I know we only have one under Section 6A1, and that is award a 10-year contract with waste management of Arizona Incorporated to provide solid waste disposal and recycling services. Okey dokey.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve item A6A1. All those in favor? I guess it's not an aye, I think. Sorry, Mayor. Mayor? I voted for him. Accidentally.
Duly noted.
Sorry.
But Councilmember Shapiro?
Councilmember Shapiro? Okay. We have lost them both. Mayor Mitchell? Mayor Mitchell? Bueller? Bueller?
Okay, then that was adopted five to zero.
All right. Okay. All right. The next section on the non-consent agenda is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearings and votes for these items are scheduled for March 22nd, 2018. And we do only have one, item B6B1, introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Department's by adding a new subsection 2-132D relating to the combination of functions under the Community Development Department. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for March 22nd, 2018. I would ask if there are any questions. I know this is a first hearing. I don't know if it's Chad, something that you would want to make a comment about, but if you would, this would be a great time to be able to do that. Not to put you on the spot, but I might have just done it.
Vice Mayor, counsel, thank you. Just to briefly explain, when the private development or view portion of engineering came into community development from Public Works, the code maintained that the Public Works Director and sometimes his designee were responsible for the items that they were holding. So that created a bit of a dichotomy where community development employees had to go across the aisle, so to speak, and get permission for things. So we're making that joint now, so we will continue to work with Public Works folks, of course, but they can stay in the chain of command, so to speak, and I can make those decisions as well as can the books of Public Works, so.
Excellent. Any questions for Chad? It's only the first read, so thank you very much for the information. We will see you back on the 22nd. All right, and now we're moving on to ordinances and items for a second hearing and final adoption. We do have one under this item, 6C1, hold the second and final hearing to adopt an ordinance for planned area development overlay and a development plan review for a new 22-story building containing a hotel with 186 rooms, 60 dwelling units, condos, and commercial for the Hayden located at 580 South College Avenue. And here we have Gammage and Burnham. Ms. Vaz, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We'll make a brief presentation. We wanted to answer some questions from last time, and then happy to answer additional questions. For your record, my name is Manjula Vaz, law firm at Gammage and Burnham, 2 North Central, Phoenix, 85004. Tonight, we're here to present the Hayden. We talked about, I'm here representing Sixth Street Hotel Partners. Sixth Street Hotel Partners is a partnership between CFT Ventures, who will be developing the hotel, McDonald Development Corporation, that will be developing the condos. It's a mixed-use development, which is a hotel, and it will have residential above with open active retail space in the bottom. Our request tonight is to do a planned area overlay, as you know, to establish site-specific development standards, and then design review for site and landscape plans. The site, here's the site at Sixth and College, southwest corner, that's right, yeah, or the northwest corner of Sixth and College, sorry, Second and Fifth. These are some site conditions. And then current zoning is CC, and it will become CCPAD with this approval. The, we match the projected land use and residential density as projected in the general plan. Wanted to talk a little bit about this, because we talked a little bit about place-making, character area plan. Adam's going to talk a little bit about it. We have some pictures that I'm going to go to. The character area plan obviously talks a lot about bringing some residential into the downtown, building high quality, high density near the light rail, and then try to bring more density against along multimodal paths. But also talks a lot about place-making along the ground floor that I know the Vice Mayor talked about. And it outlines six elements in the character area plan, which we're going to go through here, and Adam's going to go through them. We have some perspectives of the pedestrian path, excuse me, pedestrian path along College and this area along, oops, I did that wrong, Sixth Street. So I'm going to have Adam talk a little bit, I'm going to a little add, but, a little bit about the character area plan and the pedestrian path, and then we can talk a little bit about incentives for transportation, then I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi, my name's Adam Valente, represent Davis. We're at 74 East Rio Solado, we're the architect on the project. And I'm actually going to go back to the ground floor plan to discuss some of the elements of the character area plan. One of them is the pedestrian realm talks about aligning clear path of travel along parallel to the building facade, so you can see that along College Avenue. It's a huge amount of pedestrian traffic. We have more than eight feet of clear pedestrian sidewalk there. And then also along Sixth Street. Along Sixth Street is our garage entrance and the service area, but we've enhanced the paving there to give pedestrians kind of visual clue as to their path across that driveway. Other things that we're doing there involve the organic infrastructure, that's another one of the tenants of the character area plan. You can see along College Avenue, we've placed a barrier of trees essentially, so that in that early morning sun, you're going to get shade along that walkway, the entire length of that walkway. And then also along Sixth Street, we've provided additional trees. We have a really light, wide right of way. So we've provided trees on the sidewalk next to the patio to provide shade there for those summer months and that noontime sun. And then also along the street for the pedestrians making their way along Sixth Street. Also the patio, outdoor seating, that's another one of the elements of the character area plan, so you can see on the southeast, east corner is all patio, so it wraps the corner. You can see the cafe there in the lower left-hand, right-hand corner. So that's going to be very open. We're going to have open doors, panels that slide, so you can get an inside-outside quality of life there. And then the shared lobby for the hotel and the condos up in the northeast corner. And next to that is another kind of outdoor space. We need to have that for kind of fire access and things like that. But we thought that'd be a good add for the residential lobby and the hotel lobby to have an outdoor space. It's covered. We provided a green wall there. That's another part of that organic infrastructure, you know, it's kind of a, could be a succulent kind of feature wall there. Now let me take you to the perspectives, get an idea of the podium level. So another element of the character area is the podium level. It's making a distinct difference between the base of the building and the top of the building. So you, you see we have our ground floor, very open, glassy, kind of diaphanous membrane there at the ground floor, and then solid layers of parking above that, but then there's a step back to the hotel. So that provides that distinct break between the two. Another one of your elements is structural shade. So we've got shade all the way up the building. At the garage, we've got shade up to the, we've got a big kind of super frame that goes over the top of the building, which, you know, from an artistic standpoint, it creates that verticality that we're looking for, to make the building look a little bit more tall and slender. But it also provides a lot of shade, so it's functional and aesthetic. We also have balconies at our, the condo portions are the top six floors of the building, so as, and that's on all four sides, so even that western and eastern exposure, even though there is a lot of glass, we've provided that shade there. The hotel portion has a rain screen system in between the windows, so that's actually providing kind of an air barrier to the walls, so that's, you know, protecting from the solar exposure and then creating that exhaust, hot air exhaust through the system. At the ground floor, we have structured overhangs, so this is covered walkways, that's another one of the structural shade elements for the pedestrian level. And there, that gives you a good idea there, that view of, kind of that barrier of trees along the sidewalk and how much shade you're actually going to get. With that, I'll turn back over.
There's a couple, just a couple, this is College, and this is Sixth Street, to give, I think the council wants some, just kind of some renderings of what the streetscapes would look like. So that's the corner of Sixth and College, what we anticipate, we talked about, similar to what's going on on the south side of the street, bringing people out to the street, having the open bar, and being able to overflow onto the street. And then just the other question, I think we've got, we can go through the whole presentation, but I know it's, so, I'll just answer a couple of questions. The other thing, we did talk to Evolution Hospitality, who is our hospitality, who will be managing the property, and, you know, they run several other Marriott's, several other hotels, in addition to, and as we talked about with Vice Mayor, in addition to obviously giving people, you know, whether they're light rail certificates or, you know, urging them to carpool, they, as I think, they incentivize people. So their plan is, you know, they give them gift certificates. If you carpool so much, you get gift certificates, you're entered, this is what they currently do, you're entered into drawings that you get, you know, so you get free, they have free amusement park, but I don't know if that, what amusement park that is, but it could have been Legend City at the time, but now they give them places for, to go to, you know, they have obviously movie tickets, gift certificates, restaurant tickets, and I think that's the way of the future, not only like, I'm going to give you a pass, but I have to give you something else to encourage you to take the pass. And so obviously they're taking the bus, using light rail, carpooling with a coworker, those are the things that we're trying to incentivize, and then incentivize more with encouragement and gift certificates. So we're happy to go through the whole presentation, but happy to answer any questions.
I think you guys did a really great presentation at the last time. I know the council had asked some questions, and I feel like you have addressed them. I will ask, I don't know if there's any other questions. I do know that this is a public hearing, and I would ask if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item to get my attention. I see none. So, I will say this, I like the incentive idea, because I think what we've learned too, it's not only just about being able to give them something, but educate them too. And I think if there's anything that we can do from the city perspective to help with that education piece, or maybe even look for some flexibility or some possibly new ideas, whatever that might be, I mean, because I think a lot of times people don't know about park and rides, or bike shares, or whatever, and I think if there's things that we can tweak or do a little bit differently to encourage more people to use alternative modes, that'd be great. I think that's a really good thing. And I'd ask my council colleagues, any questions? All right, very nicely done. Do I have a, a motion? All right, there is a motion and a second. Who's the motion? I didn't see here. Uh, Randy? Joel? And then Randy's second?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, sorry Brigitta. All right. All right, please vote.
Aye.
Oh, there you are. Came back. I'm going to vote for Mark Mitchell. I don't know if he's on the line or not. Councilmember Shapiro, are you there?
Yes.
No, he is not. All right, motion passes. Six with, six to one. No, six to zero. Six to zero. With Shapiro lost in space somewhere up there. I don't know what happened.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great. Okay, let's see, we are going to go ahead and move on to item 62, which is hold the second final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property located at 101 South Perry Lane from the city of Tempe to Quamato Partners LLC and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute all associated agreements, addendums, conveyances, and other real documents. We have a, well, actually, this is to, do I have to ask if anybody wishes to speak on this item? Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Is this a public hearing item? See none? All right, is there a motion? Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and a second by Councilmember Navarro. All right, please vote.
Aye.
Yeah. Doesn't sound good. All right, motion passes, six to zero. With Councilmember Shapiro still lost in space. Giving a speech. Oh, he's giving a speech. All right, all right, we're going to go ahead and move on to current events, council announcements. We'll start over with Councilmember Keating.
Nothing for me, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember QB?
Yes. So the other day, 40 staff members and community members participated in a poverty simulator at AT Still University in Mesa. And there you see, on the, on the bottom right, you see Andrew Ching holding his baby. Andrew played the role of a young mother. But it was very impactful, powerful, powerful exercise, and I think will be, we're really interested in taking this simulator and using it in other venues and other places. It taught me so much. And one of the overriding impressions I had was that transportation is just so essential